We're going to move on to consent calendar, that's item five. All items are considered routine or implemented in earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested. So at this time, are there any items that we want to pull for a complete staff report and separate vote? Uh, Councilmember Mason. Muted.
Sorry, not for a separate vote. Oh, wait a minute.
No worries. I'm not seeing any. So are there items that we would like to either have a question, maybe a follow-up detail from staff? Mr. Hamilton? Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I saw this. Uh, Councilmember Mason, you'd said.
Yeah, I think if we, I just have some follow-up questions, I think, for F and G. Hold on one second, I'm just looking at this last, and that's it. That's it. I think the other questions have been answered. Thank you.
F and G, thank you. Um, anybody else from council? Not seeing any. Then we have two items.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I apologize.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
Um, that would be item G.
Got it.
A quick comment on item H. And, um, item J.
Okay. Thank you. Seeing no others, I'm going to start at the top and we'll work our way down if that's okay. So we'll start with item F, as in Frank. Appoint Rico and Michael to the city council subcommittee or ad hoc committee to review fireworks stand permit applications in preparation for the sale of, say, insane fireworks in San Bruno. And again, it is supposed to say, "and the process." Councilmember Mason.
Councilmember Mason, you're muted.
I'm sorry, thank you. Um, so in reading through the staff report and the attachments, I guess I just have a question around the review by the ad hoc committee. I'm fine with the ad hoc committee, but I think my question is more around the process and what the ad hoc committee actually reviews. So based on the question that I asked of staff and the response I got, it would be good to better understand or better, or give more opportunities for others to actually have a stand. So for those members of the public, there was a question that was sent earlier around who was noticed of the opportunity to have a fireworks stand. Nine in nine groups are grandfathered in, and then nine groups are eligible to have an additional stand. And the noticing from the answer that the council received is that they noticing of the opportunity for these stands only went to those who had stands the previous year. And so I do just want to ask how, and maybe this is a question for the city attorney, but how can we ensure that the noticing is more public? It would be great to give this opportunity to the PTAs, for example, if they're offered or they have the ability to within their own rules and regulations. Maybe the Parkside, Parkside has a number of different organizations that are made up of parents. These could greatly help our public schools in San Bruno. The Education Foundation may be interested. I have not spoken with any of them. They just came right when I looked at the applications. I noticed that those were all missing. And I don't know what other nonprofit organizations might be in the city that might be interested in having a stand. And so without actually giving notice to anybody outside of those who applied the year before, I just think it's not fair to other organizations that may want that opportunity.
Okay, I don't know. I'm sorry, I see, I can penitentially see Mark. City Attorney, I apologize. Did you have anything to say, or? Since I see you.
Yes, sorry, I was having trouble finding my unmute button. You'd think after a year and a half of this, we'd know where the unmute button is, but apparently I don't. So certainly if the city council wishes to direct staff to provide additional notice, they could certainly do that. There's no legal requirement to have provided notice nor any legal prohibition why additional notice couldn't be provided.
It, I mean, I think the rules do say that there has to be notice. I think it just doesn't provide who the notice has to be provided to. Right? So is this, is this something that would have to be agendized at a later time for next year? Since this process is already, we're already in June, or practically in June?
So I'm understanding from the city clerk and Melissa, please feel free to speak up, that the nonprofits, and I see the city manager has a, has his hand up as well, that it, staff doesn't know who's interested and who isn't. And so in the past, it's been incumbent upon the nonprofits who are generally familiar with the fact that San Bruno has fireworks and you can have fireworks stands to come to the city and request that. And we do know that has happened in the past, but apparently it may not have happened this year that there were other entities that decided to come in.
Correct. And I do want to add, I'm sorry, this is Melissa Thurman, city clerk. I do want to add that in years past, we have had some school, um, nonprofit groups interested. Parkside did it for a couple of years and eventually pulled out. We post this notice on Channel One so that the public is, that watches our Channel One slides, is aware that they can come in and get an application if they so choose. Yes, it would be pretty hard for us to know who is interested. It would be better for anybody who knows of a nonprofit in the community that may be interested to direct them to come to the city clerk's office for an application.
And then the city manager?
Sure, Javon Rogan, city manager. I think this is a quite simple issue. So I think what we have is a request to expand the noticing subsequently, and we can certainly do that. What occurred this time is that the notice was posted on Channel One, as the city clerk said, as well as sent to all of the groups that have participated in the fireworks stands in the past. And what I hear Councilmember Mason articulating is let's just broaden that. Next year, uh, expand it out, uh, do a more general notice that can pick up nonprofits that may not have participated in in the process before, or nonprofits that we don't know about. And so we can certainly do that and do more of a general citywide noticing, whether it's putting it in the city manager's newsletter, posting it on social media, what have you. I think we can get the word out. So I think it's a fairly simple request to do and still noted, and staff will be directed to do that.
Okay, great. Thank you. And I, and just because I don't know how this happened in the past since COVID was last year, as far as just inviting organizations to come and speak about their organization, it does, it says in the policy that, or the procedure that was in the staff report, that the council can request this. So again, I don't know if this needs to be agendized separately, but I'm not familiar with a couple of these groups. And I would love to hear from their groups about their organization. And it's really an opportunity to see how these funds really help their organizations. You know, because I think that these fireworks stands are huge fundraisers for some of these organizations. So same thing, I don't know if that would be something that the ad hoc committee would request, that we direct the ad hoc committee to do, or if it's been done before. I did see the notice that it doesn't sound like it had been done in recent years. But I would love to hear from some of these organizations. I think it would just be really beneficial for the council and the public to hear about what they do and, and how they benefit the San Bruno community. That's it for my comments. And then if someone can provide direction on how we would make that happen, that'd be great. Thank you.
City Manager, do you have your hand up again, or was that from before?
That was a new hand raised to address Councilmember Mason's latest comment. And so my recommendation would be the ad hoc committee discusses that in a process to invite, I would say, a select group to provide a report out. One of the things that is a challenge with our business meetings, as council knows that they begin at seven o'clock. And so the more announcements and presentations we have means the later we're getting to the business items. And given that there are 18 groups, I would suggest that the ad hoc committee just think about the process and maybe find one or two groups to highlight or invite some representatives to meeting and, you know, keep it really short, really quick.
Yeah, I'd like to expound upon that. The reason I want, I want "and" process on there was for some of these questions because the resolution goes back to 2008. It's also the fact of, is it necessary to have an ad hoc committee of the council review the applications which have been reviewed by the city clerk? And maybe we're just having another layer that isn't necessary or required. And so that is also, I was hoping to examine that as well. Because if there's not a need, then it must not duplicate efforts. And so I know Mr. Salazar has had some experience on this, did it last year for the first time. So I just was trying to get someone that walked through it before and then go ahead and then bring back to council on some of those questions that have been raised, but also about the process is, does it need the ad hoc committee? Because they have applications, my understanding is a general understanding of what, what they do, how they give back, which I know any council person would have the opportunity to see. So anyway, that was another one of my thoughts. Anything else from my colleagues on item F? Okay, seeing, then we're going to move on to item G. Item G is adopt a resolution approving the final map and authorizing the city manager to execute an improvement agreement, maintenance agreement, storm water treatment measure, maintenance agreement, and affordable housing agreement for the project at 111 San Bruno Ave., Avenue, and 761, 767 Huntington Ave. And there were two colleagues. First, we'll start with Councilmember Mason, then go to Vice Mayor Medina.
Thank you. Um, I just wanted to ask, I think, for more so for the benefit of the public, there's been so much discussion around downtown and the status of downtown. And as we know, this 111 Huntington is going to bring you right into our downtown. I would actually consider part of our downtown. So I just wanted to ask from a very, like, of high level if staff can provide a quick overview on what the maintenance agreement is and what it looks like. I was very happy to see it in the staff packet. And I think it would just be beneficial for the public to know that the city is taking measures to ensure that our landlords are taking care of their properties as they develop and after they develop.
Yes. Sorry, I'm sorry.
Let me, if, okay, maybe I can ask the Vice Mayor too, so that when staff answers, maybe they can incorporate everything at once, please. Vice Mayor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two questions. Basically, after tonight's vote, where are we with the permitting and anticipated construction schedule? And question two is, I was able to send it into staff beforehand. And my question was, does this project exclude the residents that are living there from participating in a residential parking permit program? And it was my understanding that at the meeting, the applicant expressed no objection to, to that requirement. However, that requirement didn't make it in, to an agreement. So where, what options are we, do we have at this point? Those are my two questions, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, City Manager, do you have your hand up, or should I turn it over to Ms. Ritchie?
Yes, really quick through the mayor. So there are three questions. One question from Councilmember Medina about the maintenance agreement. And then two questions from Councilmember, I'm sorry, one question from Councilmember Mason about the maintenance agreement. And then two questions from Councilmember Medina, one about the permitting status and another with regard to the residential parking program. Before we answer those three questions, I want to ask our interim public works director, Haylon Ritchie, to give a very brief overview of the project because it seems like we're going to get into a little nuance about the project. And I think it's important for the, the public that's watching to have a little background on what we're talking about. With that said, Mr. Mayor, it seems like Councilmember Mason may have another question.
I'm sorry. Yeah, Councilmember Mason?
I'm sorry, I'm just, I may as well group them in together, but when you talk about the maintenance agreement, I love that you talked about weeds and garbage. And so can you just make sure you address the timeframe that the city will be providing to the owner to actually remedy the situation? Thank you.
Ms. Ritchie?
Yes, good morning, honorable mayor, city council members. My name is Haylon Ritchie, interim public works director. I would like to present, share my screen. Some brief slides here. Okay, so the title slide. Approximate location of 111 San Bruno Ave. is at the southwest corner of San Bruno Ave. West and Huntington Ave. This is a close-up view of an aerial of this location. It is outlined in red. These are some architectural renderings. Project overview. The building is five stories and contains 62 residential units, of which 11 are affordable housing, with six low income and five moderate income. There's approximately 7,800 square feet of ground floor commercial. Previous approvals include the transit corridors plan amendment, plan development permit, architectural review permit, besting tentative map, two loading zone spaces on southbound Huntington Ave. Public improvements will include new curb gutter sidewalk, driveway ramps, pavement, water sewer storm drain improvements, street lights, traffic signal modification, street trees and landscaping, and irrigation to go with landscaping. Before you tonight is the request to approve the final map, as well as authorize the city manager to execute various agreements, including improvement, maintenance, storm water treatment measures, and affordable housing agreement. With that, I can help to answer several of the questions. So Councilmember Mason, you had asked about the maintenance agreement. What those, what that includes is, so as part of the improvement agreement, there will be various improvements off-site. So that's within the public right-of-way, and those were listed as in the previous slide. So what the maintenance agreement does is ensures that the project improvements will be maintained to city standards for various facilities. And so what that does allow for is enhanced maintenance of public improvements by the private property owner. So certain things that may have customarily been maintained by the city, such as street trees or lights, those would now be maintained by the private property owner through this maintenance agreement. And what this maintenance agreement allows is that upon noticing in 30 days to correct the measure, that if, you know, if that were not to occur, the city could step in and, you know, well, initially provide the notice. And if that, the remedy doesn't occur, then it affords the city the ability to perform the work and seek compensation for the time and cost to perform that work. Thank you. And then regarding the status of the permits, they are, there are few pending permits for city review, which include the shoring building encroachment permit for public improvements. The permit plans for public improvements are near complete. However, there are a couple of items that still require some additional coordination between the applicant and the city before the encroachment permit for the public improvements can be issued. And so there's less, you know, few remaining items to be worked through, but it is very close. I think this item tonight, the final map and agreements will certainly move the project forward. And I believe there are still building permits also to be obtained. And regarding the residential parking permit program, possibly if I could request the city manager or the city attorney to help assist with that question?
Sure. To the mayor, Javon Rogan, city, city manager, I'll address that question. So just to recap for the council and the public, the question from Councilmember Medina was, can the city prohibit the property from participating in a future residential parking program? And I believe what Councilmember Medina referenced is that in a prior meeting, there was an expressed interest or non-reluctance from the developer that they may be okay with that exclusion. Upon subsequent conversations, as this project went through the, the process to bring it here tonight, that agreement was not included in the document center before you. The council may remember that that requirement was in the Mills Park project as a developer concession, as a part of a development agreement. We do not have a development agreement with this project. Thus, we are not allowed, we are not able to get that as a concession, a negotiated concession, yet the developer, property owner is not willing. I did contact the developer today and confirm that they are comfortable with the documents as presented to council and not supportive at this time of excluding the project from a future residential parking program. The project is not asking for a parking concession, and staff's analysis is that we do not, based on our objective standards, have the ability to exclude this project from a future residential parking program if it is not a negotiated concession. And so while there was a conversation about that, it is not in the agreement center before you currently tonight.
Okay, so I, I believe the questions are answered. There, there may be some follow-up to it. I also want to be able to open it up. We have somebody from the community who would like to speak on this item. Again, this is in regards to the property at 111 San Bruno Ave. and 761, 767 Huntington Ave. The city clerk, if you can bring in, Mr. Ritchie, please.
Yes, Moshe Dinar. I'm trying to bring you in, Mr. Dinar. It's not, just one moment, I'm getting an error here. There we go, I think I got it. I'm trying to get you unmuted. It's, I'm having some trouble here. If you're able to unmute yourself, will you please? Hit the unmute button?
Yeah.
There you are. Okay. We can hear you whenever you're ready.
I'm ready now.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Moshe Dinar. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak at your meeting. I'm the architect for the project. I've been working with planning, public works, and the whole city staff on this project for six and a half years. We are reaching an important milestone in our process in the sense that with the approval of these agreements and the approval of the final map, we will be able to obtain a permit to do the off-site improvements and make improvements to the city's utilities along the street and then start the construction of our building. So we're very happy. We're very excited. We want to thank you for the time that you've spent listening to us in various presentations and various neighborhood meetings. Thank you again. As far as the parking is concerned, I'd like to say that the amount of space available for parking is extremely limited. We are, we have a very, very expensive parking system. It is three-high. It goes down on the ground and comes back up. It requires the availability of a credit card type thing for each resident to, to, to operate. And I think that we have enough to satisfy all our residents. So I don't know about possibly participating in other programs if it's possible. Certainly, the owner may consider it, but I don't think we have enough to, to, to park people outside the building and their guests. Other than that, I, I feel that we have a great building and we're looking forward to its construction in the city of San Bruno. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your comments. If there's anybody else who wishes to speak on this item, if you could raise your hand now. I see one more speaker, and this will be the last speaker. I'm not seeing any other hands come up. But, City Clerk, if you could bring in our next speaker.
Hi. Yes, just one moment. The next speaker is Stephen Seymour.
Hello.
Hi, Stephen. Whenever you're ready.
All right. I just wanted to, it's exciting that this project is moving forward. The property's been vacant for so long. It'd be nice to have neighbors there. I do want to express my concern that the property is going to be able to, or is not taken out of what might be a residential parking permit program in and around the area. And my biggest concern there, well, two, I have one. I mean, the first one is the owner expressed in a meeting when Councilmember Medina asked if they would be willing to not take part in residential parking permit programs. They said absolutely. They said that no problem. And I'm, so it's, it's really a concern to me that that was not put into the agreement. And I think, my second issue is, is I think that really is something that you're going to have to look at hard in the transit corridor because the idea is to build multifamily units through the corridor. And you're building those multifamily units next to neighborhoods that are already parking impacted. It makes sense to me that the developer, the owner of future buildings, would make sure that their properties are able to support the people who will be living.
Mr. Seymour, we lost your audio.
I can hear apprehension in his voice that the system that they've put in place will be able to support all of the people that will be moving into that building and their, their neighbors and, and family members and friends that may be visiting them. So I'm, I'm pretty concerned that we didn't have this, have the developer exclude themselves from a future parking permit program. And I think you are going to have to work on making sure that happens for future development in this area because these neighborhoods cannot take another car. Thank you very much for your, for listening.
Thank you for your comments. So there are no other speakers, so we'll, that'll be in for public comment on this item under consent. We'll bring it back to the city council for any follow-up questions or comments. Councilmember Hamilton?
I just want to, Mr. Dinar was correct. This, this project's been a very long time coming. In fact, way back when I was on the TSCC, this project came before us to approve a, to approve a loading zone. And at that time, this was, it might have been five years ago. The, at that time, one of my co-committee members just made a comment, we were not voting on whether there was enough parking in this building because that was not, that was not before us, and there wasn't any decision to be made about that. But one of my committee, fellow committee members commented that she did not believe there was enough parking in this building. And the, Mr. Dinar was at that meeting and spoke at length about that there was plenty of parking. And so it is, it is a little disconcerting to hear the, the change over time in that regard, what, you know, after, after it's all been approved. I'm still going to vote yes on it, but it's still, it is still a concern. And I think this is something that we need to, to watch for in the future as we, as we move ahead to get things, you know, and get, get these types of things in writing and built into the, into the agreements as, as, as we can legally moving forward. Thank you.
Any other final questions from colleagues? Vice Mayor Medina?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So my, my que, look, I want to see this project built too. And I think that over the years, as the community understood, okay, they're going to have enough parking for, for, for their residents and guests and a benefit to our community, having more homes. But it, I think, I think we were led to believe that if there was a parking permit program, the residents at this location wouldn't participate in it. And why this is so important is that we know currently parking
parking anywhere near that building is extremely difficult. Um, so legally, um, I, the question then would be to the city attorney. This is not what we're voting on right now. Uh, of that part, it seems has already passed to approve the project, and we didn't have that in there. So I'd like to, like to have, uh, our city attorney opine on that.
So you're correct, Vice Mayor Medina. The, what's in front of you tonight are the improvement agreements only and not, um, the relitigation of the conditions of approval for the project.
Thank you very much, City Attorney Zaffarano. Um, I would, I would, I would ask the, I'm asking the developer that it's the right thing to do. Um, having your future residents out potentially, uh, further impacting the parking isn't very neighborly. Um, and we will make sure that, uh, we'll do as much as we can to make sure this doesn't happen again. Thank you.
Yeah, and the only thing, um, um, that I would suggest is so that it's really documented, I think, uh, when it goes through the process. And if we find ourselves in, in this unique situation to where i- it is one of those larger developments, it's within a neighborhood area, that it's, that is stipulated yea or nay. That it's on there, people are agreeing to it, the process is going through, and therefore, there's, there's, nobody's, you know, if it's, they said five years ago, six years ago, that it, it's hard and, and folks change, council changes, staff changes, uh, members change. So, um, I think going forward, it would be helpful if it was something that was, uh, within that, that process, so at least it's, it's noted, it's understood, and everybody's on the same page. My, my thought. Anything else on, and that was G? Um, I'm gonna move on to item H. Waive the second reading and adopt amendments to the San Bruno Municipal Code, Chapter 2.36, to complete transition of personnel board functions to the city manager's office and Human Resources Department. Vice Mayor.
This is gonna be really quick, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to acknowledge that I did receive a text from Peter Finn of 856 indicating he had no objection to, uh, the, uh, change in, in our, uh, committee.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. And I just had one quick question to city manager. Um, because I know the personnel board used to deal with, um, the, uh, the list, when I say list, captain's list, um, et cetera. And, and as far as our battalion chief list and how long it would stay out there, we'd go to the personnel board, they would have, um, input whether to extend the list or not, and, and go out for another, so how is that going to be facilitated now?
So, uh, council, Mr. Mayor Medina, uh, in response to your question, that responsibility, uh, will be assigned, uh, to the Chief People Officer, our Assistant, uh, City Manager, to make that decision. So it has been delegated, um, uh, to staff, uh, through the, through the action that is, uh, before you tonight. And so it is no longer a response, a decision of the board or of, um, the city council. Um, and what that is, is we have eligibility lists, uh, after we run a recruitment, typical, uh, administrative hiring process, we establish a qualified list. Um, if no one has hired off that list, or let's say six months, the list can be extended for another six months or the list can expire. And so that, that decision, uh, will, will, on expiring the list, will be handled by staff.
Okay, there will be a process in place as, when, when that time comes, okay. Um, okay, anything else from my colleagues for item H? Not seeing any. Let's move on to item J. Adopt resolution accepting the short-term plan to activate Centennial Plaza with plaza improvements, authorizing the city manager to implement plaza improvements and appropriating $80,000 from the Park and Louvre fee fund. Vice Mayor.
Yes, thank you, uh, Mayor Medina. Um, just wanted to, I did se- submit a question, and my interest in, on the proposed plan, um, basically, what I, what I heard back is that there are some potential changes. And, uh, and for those changes, um, perhaps staff can give an update, which kinda addresses, um, a few of my questions. Um, however, I'm, I wanna make sure that they have plenty of funding to address the change from, um, decomposed granite to pavers. So, um, just wanted to let them, let staff know that perhaps it would be, uh, beneficial to increase that budget because pavers aren't cheap. And, um, and I'm also interested in a small stage which, which could be made of pavers that, 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 um, and some potential lighting, um, for that area. I understand that we had, had at one point some solar capability, lighting, left over from the, uh, streetlights that, uh, went out and, and, uh, over the couple of, of the years. So, um, just wanted to bring that forward and, and make sure that we have the proper amount of funding for, for that and the changes that are identified. Thank you.
Uh, city manager, please.
So, uh, I would recommend that the city council, uh, do a small adjustment to the budget. Uh, as you know, the recommended use is Park and Louvre funds. Uh, the recommended amount is 80,000. Now, uh, we will be working with a landscape contractor to both, uh, design and, and implement these improvements that are, are intended to be a quick win, uh, a short-term, uh, project. And so, uh, if the city council, uh, would like to provide additional budget, uh, we can look to, uh, seeing if there's a possibility to upgrade and add lighting and, uh, additional, uh, additional papers. Again, um, uh, can't, uh, say for certain at this point, but, uh, I would recommend you can increase the budget from, uh, 80,000 to 150,000. That will provide, uh, sufficient funds to, to get the project done, and any funds that are not spent will be returned to the Park and Louvre Fund.
Are there, uh, questions, uh, from colleagues, comments? Uh, 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 council member Salazar, sorry.
Thank you. Um, so just, just in terms of, you know, changes and, and adding things, the, um, as a project manager, I gotta tell you, scope creep is one of those things that just makes me cringe. And when we start, you know, we kind of agreed to some quick improvements and, and a budget. I, I'd like to see us stay as close to that as possible. I mean, going from 80 to 150, that's almost doubling it. And, um, I was also wondering, um, typically, we have gone to the Park and Rec Commission with, um, appropriations from Park and Louvre funds, and I'm wondering if that has gone through the commission yet? And are they aware that we're, uh, proposing the use of those funds for this project?
City manager.
Sure, um, council member Salazar, uh, it is our intention to take, uh, the finalized plans, uh, to the Park and Rec, uh, Commission, uh, so, so they can see those, and we will, uh, I do not know if they, um, if, if it has gone to them just yet. Um, I, unfortunately, right now, I'm just blanking on what the last agenda was for the Park and Rec Commission, uh, but I believe it has not. Uh, but, uh, regardless, we will take it to them, uh, for, for their input.
Y- y- yeah, I wanted to, uh, also, uh, you know, that's one thing that I know in the past, that some commissioners were not, uh, pleased, shall we say, that, that topic, not that they controlled the, the money, but we do bring those things by them, to get their input, they have it on their agenda for the public. Um, the other thing is, is I know, and I know you're having just to kind of throw something out now, but to go to, from 80 to 150, almost doubling it, um, it concerns me a little bit. I mean, it was 125, I know it's like Rico, it's $25,000, but just doubling it at a, at a moment's notice does concern me a little bit. Um, and I know, I think, city manager, my assumption would be that you're kind of obviously having to just kind of think about what, what it could cost, not really knowing.
Absolutely. Uh, councilor member, I believe it was in, uh, April that we brought the concept to you, and council's direction was, if you can identify funding, bring this to us as soon as possible so you can implement this project. Uh, and so that, that is why it is before you. Uh, in, in fact, the direction is, we were gonna include the, the funding in the proposed budget that would be, uh, adopted late June and available July 1. And council's direction was, uh, frankly, bring it to us sooner so we can get these, uh, these improvement, improvements implemented downtown as soon as possible. And so that is why it is to you, uh, this soon. And yes, the recommendation to increase to 80 to 150 was not, um, an attempt to sort of double the budget. It was sort of to provide enough funds to get the job done. And, uh, again, any funds that are not spent will be returned to the Park and Louvre Fund. Uh, and we will certainly take the final design and, and, and the concept to the Park and Rec Commission, uh, and then move forward expeditiously. I think part of the, the concept of getting these improvements done soon is, uh, summer is fast approaching, and having Centennial Plaza, uh, reactivated for the summer and potentially additional places for Albert Dining was of high importance. And so, uh, we, we are trying to accomplish your mission, uh, and, uh, low having, uh, not wanting to have to come back to our district authority is why I said increase it to 150. Know that we will be diligent with the funds as we always are.
Okay, uh, thank you. Uh, we're gonna go to councilman, member Hamilton, then we'll take, uh, comment from the public.
So, um, might I suggest that, uh, you know, I, I, I wanna see improvements here as well, but I also don't like to see the, the budget go up by this much without knowing exactly what we're getting for it and, and all of that. And, and, uh, and also don't wanna put staff on the spot to have to try to guess at that. Um, would an op- could a viable option be that we approve the, we approve the 80,000 as-is? And then as the, as the final design is put, put forth, staff would be able to tell us that it would cost X, X thousand more to put in lighting or whatever's this, you know, specific proposal, uh, proposal so that we can add to it later if we so choose. But approve this so that we can get started on it, um, for all the reasons that the city manager just outlined. That's what I will recommend for tonight.
I think that might be a question for city manager.
Yeah, maybe I should have phrased it as a question, is that a feasible course of action?
We can absolutely bring another staff report and a appropriation request back to the city council. Uh, and what that would mean is that we would not be able to interest a contract for the full amount. Uh, we would attempt to, uh, give the vendor a, um, an, an initial task order for the work that we have budgeted, and then, uh, for bringing another staff report back to the city council, uh, as well as go through the, uh, Park and Rec Commission. Uh, and so it may, it may have a timing impact, it may not, I literally don't know right now. Um, but if we would like to increase, um, uh, the work that we're doing, it's certainly gonna come at a, at an additional cost. If that cost exceeds 80,000, we'll come back, if, if that's council's desire. Or you can provide an additional allocation now, uh, knowing that staff would go to the Park and Rec Commission, and any funds that are not spent would be returned back to the Park and Louvre Fund.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, if there's anybody from the public, because we do have somebody from the public who'd like to speak on this, now would be the opportunity to re- raise your hand. Again, this is in regards to the, uh, short-term plan to activate Centennial Plaza. Um, city clerk, if you can bring in our speaker.
Yes, Paul Wapinski.
Good evening. Um, I'm, I'm just concerned about what I just heard. Uh, if you have a budget, that means you've already planned and did cost estimates, and just throwing out numbers and shotgunning is, is not a way to do business. We, if you can update the budget to 150, that's fine, but you should have some justification behind it. Um, it, it's really, you know, it's taxpayer money, and just saying that we'll, we'll return what we don't spend, you know, government, uh, usually doesn't, uh, give money back. So they're gonna spend what you give them. So we should, you know, have a budget, what's needed gets spent, what doesn't need it, doesn't get spent. But just shotgunning is, I, I think it's a bad way to do business. If this was a regular, uh, business instead of the government, they would throw you out of the office. That's all I got.
Thank you for your comments. I am not seeing anybody else from the public, so we'll, um, close off for public comment and bring it back to council, Vice Mayor Medina.
Yeah, in the, in defense of, of that last statement, um, it, it probably would be beneficial to share the original concept that had decomposed granite, and there's a fountain there. And when decomposed granite gets wet, it's not the best material to, to stand on. And the addition of pavers, um, is a substantial, uh, improvement on a, on a, on a surface. Um, so I, I believe that this is gonna be in that condition for quite a while because we don't have a long-term solution to work to do with that property. Um, and we need something that looks nice. And I wanna see us move forward with it. Um, to only allow 80,000 is not gonna be enough. That was a preliminary budget based on quickly putting something together at the council's direction. So, um, I'm okay with allocating the amount. I, I trust staff will do their best to make sure that they're gonna be careful with spending those dollars. Um, but it's also important to remember, it needs to look nice. It's nearly the centerpiece of our downtown. And for too long, it looked the way it looked. I'm in support of the 150, and I guess we're not to have a separate vote for this agenda item.
Um, I'll check with, uh, the city attorney, but maybe emotion could be if it were to modify that, or if it, it needs to be a separate vote, we can always certainly do that. Uh, city attorney?
But, but I'm understanding, you can't include that in the, in the original motion if somebody wants to make that.
Okay, thank you. Um, is there any other, uh, questions or comments? Okay, you know, I, and I know it does say short-term, and I will tell you, I remember the day that it was Wells Fargo, I remember the day it was a lot with a, uh, fence that collected weeds and, uh, newspapers that blew. Um, and I think our intent is short-term, but i- in all honesty, I think the short-term will become something longer. Um, everybody has a definition what short-term and long-term are. Um, but I believe the intent is for short-term. However, with no fault to staff or anyone else, and I go back to when it is what it is today, it was done in-house with what was currently at its disposal. When I say its disposal, what parks had, uh, to put that together. So it was a very nominal cost, and that's why it was done, because it was to be temporary. Well, obviously, we know that's, it's not temporary. So, um, anyway, I just wanted to remind folks of that. So with that said, we are concluded with item J. We have consent for items A through J. Um, and at this time, you could make a motion, as I've indicated, that modifies the resolution on J if there is council direction for it. Uh, Vice Mayor Medina.
Yes, Mayor Medina, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar with the amendment to item J, increasing it to 150,000.
Through the chair? If we, if we could, before that gets seconded, uh, if that, if that, if there is gonna be a change to that one item, then I would like that item pulled and voted on separately.
Yeah, uh, I, there was a motion, I haven't had a second yet, but there's been a, it could be amendment to the motion, which would be to pull it and have a vote sep- uh, separately. Um, does the motion maker have a problem if we revert back and just deal with A through I first?
I have no problem with that, that's, that's why I suggested that we pull it, but that's okay. Absolutely, no problem.
Okay, just if it wasn't necessary, then we didn't have to. Uh, council member Hamilton?
I, I would also, um, uh, I, I, I think it should be a separate, voted on separately, not, not altogether. And, um, I would make a suggestion, uh, to the motion maker that you ought to also include the specific direction that excess funds be returned to the Park and Louvre Fund. I think that, like, that should be part of the, the motion, I think.
Okay, so let's go with consent, items A through I. Is there, uh, action from council?
Move to approve.
Okay, City Clerk, let you figure out who was second, who seconded it, but we have a motion and a second, and Mr. Hamilton says it doesn't matter either way. Roll call, please.
Councilmember, excuse me, Councilmember Hamilton.
Aye.
Councilmember Mason.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Rico Medina.
Aye.
Motion clear.
Thank you very much, City Clerk. Now we have item J. Actored from council. A separate vote.
Mr. Mayor.
Vice Mayor.
Yes, I'd like to make the motion to approve item J with the, amending the amount from 80 to 150,000 with remaining funds to be returned to the Park and Louvre fund.
I'll second.
Motion made on second, on, on the question, there was also about it going to the Park and Rec Commission. Is that, for review, is that still part of the motion, or is that assumed? I don't want to assume.
Mr. Mayor, that would be assumed.
Okay. Is that correct, Mr. Hamilton?
Sure.
Okay. Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Aye.
Councilmember Mason.
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar.
While I wholeheartedly support the, the project and the submission that staff did, I can't support changing the budget so dramatically at the, at the last hour, and so I'm going to have to vote no.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina.
Aye.
Mayor Rico Medina.
Aye, and I'm voting aye because I just am concerned the short-term will not be, but I appreciate, and I, and I do agree that this should not be the norm for council to double budget processes as we've given direction to staff and, and in that going forward opinion.